All right, thank you. Good, all right. Let's go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting to order. Ask for roll call, please.
Edie Darko.
Here.
Marge Durkerson.
Here.
John Paul.
Mary Coont.
Here.
Mary Mason. Lisa Bannister.
Here.
Chad Freeley.
Here.
Heather Schultz.
Here.
Jonathan Jess.
All right, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for a rigid stance on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have minutes from the regular meeting June 9 and special meeting June 23.
I move for approval of the regular meeting minutes from June 9 and the special meeting minutes of June 23 as written.
My second.
All right, we motion a second then for the approval of the regular meeting minutes June 9 and special meeting June 23. All in favor say aye.
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 Not, same sign. All right. Thank you for all that are in attendance and those that might be listening or watching at home. Appreciate tuning in and being with us this evening. We do not have anybody signed up for public comments, so we will move forward to a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second then to adopt the agenda this evening. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right. 8.1, 25, 26 preliminary budget. Welcome.
Good evening.
Share some good news with us.
Ryan, would you sit back down?
I've got news. We're in a good spot. All right, so tonight I'm here to present the 25, 26 preliminary budget. Again, very preliminary. It's fairly, it's a very conservative preliminary budget just because we just had our biennial budget from the state was signed less than about 10 days ago. So it's a lot of information coming in fast that we weren't privy to prior to July 3. So it's preliminary. It will change, hopefully not a lot, but it will change slightly by the time we approve the final one in October. So we'll start by looking at the calendar for the next few months. On July 1, our equalization aid estimates were released. Tonight, we will approve the preliminary budget and the preliminary tax levy. In September, I'll present to you cash flow borrowing resolution and we'll have our third Friday enrollment count, which drives our revenue limit and ultimately the majority of our budget. And then in October, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue will issue the equalized value report, which gives us the value of our entire district properties. The equalization aid will be certified on the 15th. The voucher information will come out on the 15th and we'll adopt the original budget and certify the tax levy at the board meeting on October 27. Some revenue impacts from this new biennial that was signed on July 3. So it's called Wisconsin 2025 Act 15, again, signed on July 3. It increases the per member base by $325. That we knew we were planning on that. That was decided a year ago when Governor Evers issued that. But, and the low revenue limit ceiling will still be 11,000 in this next year. Some changes that we need to highlight are the increase in special education categorical aid. So currently, the categorical aid is supposed to reimburse 33% of our local spending in special ed. It doesn't cover all of that. This year, we're actually getting about 30 and a half percent of that 33%. So they up that to 42% for next year, which would give us an increase based on this year's spending of about $680,000. Now, we are not budgeting for 42%. We're going to budget for 39% just to keep that cushion there and be conservative, be fiscally responsible. But it is calling for 42%. And the per pupil categorical aid stays the same at $742 per kid. Other adjustments in this new biennial is the increase in the funding amount for both regular and special ed open enrollment. That impacts us both on the expense and the revenue side of things. About a 22% increase for both revenues and expenses and our open enrollment is projected this year. They did increase the funding amount for the vouchers by $640 per student. There's no new money added in the equalization aid calculation. And significant but probably not talked about piece of this budget is they moved the Act 12 Personal Property Aid from spendable dollars into the revenue limit formula. So for us, that's about $290,000. This year, we got it. They just, it's like, just give us a check, use it how you wish. Next year, that's going to be in the revenue limit formula. So it's, it will help reduce local taxes, which is a good thing. But it's not going to impact our budget as much as we had originally hoped, so. Other impacts on the revenue limit. So our revenue limit is anticipated decrease by about $193,000. That's mostly due to our three-year average of FTE is decreasing, so this is expected. We will receive a decline enrollment exemption of a little over $800,000. Again, the average is decreasing by about 91 students. And I'm currently budgeting no increase in the number of voucher students, but there is a 5.59% increase in the levy amount for those students due to the increase from that biennial budget. Equalization aid impacts, so our aid is projected to decrease slightly by about $120,000. It's relatively flat in the grand scheme of things, less than half a percent. And our referendum spending will have a positive impact on this aid as we get to the final certification. A little more on the equalization aid. So this is published every year at the beginning of July. It's a slow time. The news and media kind of run with it, so it's an estimate. It's still an estimate. We're anticipating it to be relatively flat, but it's an estimate and these larger schools that when they get their final numbers in into DPI, that can swing things fairly significantly based on their spending. And so, because right now it's based on our budgeted expenditures, but a lot of these schools did not budget in 24, 25 for passing a referendum, like, because it wasn't a guarantee. And so then once they passed it, now they're spending money that wasn't budgeted for, so that could affect our equalization aid talking point. Other pieces of the budget, so the last biennial budget, the 23, 25, increased the school levy tax credit. I know we've talked about this for the last two years and how that impacts local taxes. So that money was put into this tax credit, which definitely does decrease the school taxes for the district. However, had that been put into the formula, it would have actually decreased the mill rate. So it's just a reallocation of funds, but that will stay and we will continue to see that credit on your tax bill come November or December. And then the other piece is the equalization aid allocation in this new budget did not increase. So the aid, the increase for the per pupil, the $325, that's all going to be covered by local taxes. So the state's not giving us more money to cover that increase of the per pupil funding. Moving on to expenditures, so some highlights in this year's budget. Health insurance will increase slightly at 3.9%. We're really happy with that number. There's a lot of schools that were in the 20% increases, so this is a good number. Our staff is relatively healthy and we trend well in the marketplace, so we were happy with the 3.9% increase. Dental insurance, a slight increase as well. We're budgeting a 5% increase in transportation and utility costs. And right now, I currently have a 4% increase in salary to cover all the stipends, CPI and level movement for the staff. One positive piece of our expenditure budget going into this next year is that we're seeing a fairly significant savings in our insurance based on our decrease in our mod for workers' comp. So we'll see about a $45,000 savings in premium and property and liability insurance did not jump this year as we had initially expected. So our insurance costs will be down for next year. Looking at the budget as a whole, we're looking at $43,086,000 in revenues. $43,086,000 in expenses, of which include a $25,000 transfer to Fund 46 with balanced budget for 25, 26. Here's a comparison of our 24, 25 actual numbers to our preliminary budget for 25, 26. You can see we have a slight change in our revenue limit of $12,000. A slight decrease in equalization aid, a slight decrease in the Fund 10 levy, and an increase in the all fund levy, which includes our payment on the new referendum that was passed in November, which would put our mill rate as of today at about $7.11, which is a 23 cent increase from last year. This is a breakdown. I showed you this slide earlier this spring, but now with the context of what we're expecting our mill rate to be, you can see current year, $6.88, projecting $7.11, which based on 24, 25 numbers would put us right in line with the state average for K-12 school districts. So the recommended action tonight is to approve and adopt the 25, 26 preliminary budget as presented, including the Fund 10 levy of $10,000, $10,870,779, and the total levy of $18,679,970.
Any questions?
Are the health and dental rates locked in for a couple of years or is that just a one-year?
We had rate caps, but this was the last year, the rate cap. One more.
So this is one year now going forward.
As far as like the special ed aid, why does that not, what, why does that not hit the 33%?
So they take all the spending from the previous year and then they do a projected increase on it and then they say, we're going to give you 33% of that, you know, that's how they allocate the money. But it's ultimately, it's a set dollar amount, so then if people spend more than what they projected, then you get less. So this year for 24, 25, all the districts in the state exceeded that fairly significantly. So now instead of getting the 33%, we're at, I think it's 30.6-ish.
And then, can you tell me, do you know offhand what the new voucher amount is for? I assume there's two different amounts, one for elementary and one for high school or how's that look?
Yep, so for 25, 26, the voucher for K-8 is $10,877. For 912, it would be $13,371. And for special ed, it would be $16,049.
Thank you. Any other questions otherwise?
I move we approve and adopt the 2025, 2026 preliminary budget as presented, including the Fund 10 tax levy of $10,870,779 and the total tax levy of $18,679,970.
My second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then to approve and adopt the 25, 26 preliminary budget as presented. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Marge Durkerson.
Yes.
John Paul.
Yes.
Mary Coont.
Yes.
Lisa Bannister.
Yes.
Chad Freeley.
Yes.
Heather Schultz.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Oh, we got Fund 46 transfer. Stay there. Go ahead.
So tonight I just would ask the board to approve the annual Fund 46 transfer. So this is just the dollars that go into that savings account for capital expenses based on our capital improvement plan. There's, we have four years left on our hold before we can spend these dollars, but we just would like to continue putting something into it. It does earn interest, so at a fairly significant rate, so that's been positive. So we're looking at a $25,000 transfer for the 24, 25 fiscal year.
Do you have, or do you know what that interest, the interest rate is different every year, I assume?
It, so it's in a money market with a local bank, and so it changes daily, but it's been consistently over 4.5%. Four, 4 to 5% for the last year, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise entertain a motion.
I'll move the board to approve the transfer $25,000 from the general fund to Fund 46.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then to approve $25,000 from the general fund to Fund 46. Another roll call vote, please, Mary.
John Paul.
Yes.
Mary Coont.
Yes.
Lisa Bannister.
Yes.
Chad Freeley.
Yes.
Heather Schultz.
Yes.
Edie Darko.
Yes.
Marge.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That brings us to reports by the Board of Education, starting with.
Operations.
Operations Committee.
Operations did meet on June 23 and the majority of things that were discussed at that meeting were exactly what Mr. Cashman has provided us just before. The update on the 2024, 25 budget and also the talk about some of the budget, excuse me, the Fund 46 and the improvement expenses going forward. And the, Mr. Cashman and Mr. Marshall also discussed and shared the revenue projects monthly update for June with getting committee feedback. And our next meeting for the operations is September 22, 2025. And at this time, I would invite, well Joanna is not here, but John, do you have anything to share on the referendum projects?
It's probably been three weeks since we met last, just with July 4. Basically, at the last meeting, we talked about, we went through the layout of the school again, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. Things are going to flow and look. We did talk about some of the outside work that needs to be done regarding field placement, traffic flow, things of that sort. So it's moving along. I believe we meet again on Wednesday, this Wednesday, and at the next monthly board meeting and we'll have a little bit more to add to it.
Ryan, did you have anything to add on?
Yeah, I have some updates for the projects that are currently taking place around the district. So in Washington, the Phase 1 addition continues to progress with the completion of the MEP installation. CMU painting is going on inside the new classrooms and they're beginning to wrap up that part of the project. Jefferson and Prairie View Playgrounds, all the new equipment is installed. The turf is delivered and the turf installers started doing the base work last week and they'll continue working on that in the coming week. Jefferson pedestrian paths, the concrete is scheduled to start excavating on July 17 with tentative completion on July 29. The Jefferson office continues to progress with electrical roughens and masonry work taking place. We did run into some asbestos that slowed it down, but we're still scheduled to be completed on time. The ESC ADA and site improvements, as you can see when you walked in tonight, the concrete's been poured. Peeper Power will be on site on July 17 to bore power for the parking lots. And concrete bases will be poured early next week. And for the high school accessibility improvements, the football and softball lights have been, light bases have been installed. We need to do one softball light base left, but the utility relocation has to happen first.
Okay, any questions for Ryan? We do continue to get this great monthly update on the referendum projects that is out there for people to see and to reference if they have any questions going forward. So, thank you for that.
I did, President Freeley wanted to elaborate on what Mr. Kraus shared regarding the site conversation. So as a follow-up to that meeting regarding the site layout, site safety, traffic flow, et cetera. Troy Marshall, our district facility and safety officer, coordinated a follow-up meeting with representatives from the police and fire department. Representatives from the sheriff's office were also invited to participate. But the feedback that we got specifically from the chief and other representatives from the fire department were very, very positive about the layouts. They're very pleased with the layout, with the flow, with the traffic, which was great feedback. There were a couple subtle suggestions that one of the representatives from the fire department offered up, which we brought back. They were very easy to make those adjustments to just accommodate some more successful flow of emergency vehicles. So that was very good feedback, so we're making good progress on that front.
Anybody else have anything to add? I know going past the elementary schools and seeing the ADA accessible playground equipment is kind of neat. I think the kids will, the opportunities there are great for that, so. That's all I have.
All right, any final questions for Marge? All right. Teaching and learning.
Great. Teaching and learning also met on June 23. All of our committee members were present and I was once again selected as the committee chairperson. Dr. Meyer, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Ms. Spahnhold, Director of Student Services, reported on procedural updates and planning for 2025, 2026. Dr. Meyer reviewed the teaching and learning focus and overall focus areas, professional learning plan, and the academic standards for 2025, 2026, which the board adopts annually. He provided an overview of the district's curriculum, course guides, and materials and explained the board annually adopts the curriculum, utilizing the standards with the understanding that there are continued processes for development. He explained that some of the courses are under current revision and will be revised or added as they are complete and shared the curriculum review cycle and the support plan for students who may be at risk. He provided highlights of the long-range plan for library services development and an overview of the achievement gap reduction program data. Ms. Spahnhold explained the board will receive annual recommendation to adopt the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, Special Education Model Forms and Policies and Procedures Manual at the July regular board meeting. She presented the annual health service report and the annual seclusion restraint report for 2024, 2025, and they reviewed the recommendation that will be presented for action at the July board meeting. Our next committee meeting is also scheduled for September 22. And Tiffany is here to share with us any questions or items that we have for the instructional, we'll start with instructional planning and procedural updates for 2025, 2026. Are there any further questions from anyone? No? Okay. Anything on the DPI, special ed model forms and policies and procedures, annual adoption? You guys are full of questions coming. They must have done a very good job. Excellent.
Maybe she just wants to talk to us still.
Yeah. Do you have anything to share Tiffany, any other changes?
You know, one thing that I thought of after I presented at the committee meeting that I didn't elaborate on regarding our seclusion and restraint report is that every year we do train new staff on nonviolent crisis intervention, verbal de-escalation. And we also provide annual training for teachers that we know are working with students who might be more inclined to have some escalation. So I didn't elaborate on that and I just wanted to let you all know that we do that annually and as needed if there are teachers that we hire or TAs that we hire that need that training.
Do you find that happening more in elementary schools that there are the issues or?
There are higher number of seclusion and restraints in our elementary schools than in our high schools, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Then I move the board to approve the procedural updates and plans for 2025, 2026 as required by policy statute. The administration of the Beaver Dam Unified School District has the authority to make non-holistic modifications to best meet the needs of our schools, staff, and students through continuous improvement processes. This approval includes the Professional Learning Plan, Annual Reading Curriculum Evaluation, Course Guides and Resources, At-Risk Plan, Library Services Plan, AGR Report, Adoption of the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's Special Education Model Forms and Procedures Manual for the 2025, 2026 school year, Health Services Report, and Seclusion and Restraint Reports.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We just need it all in favor. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
Okay. And then we have our annual declaration and parent notice of student academic standards. So the school boards are required by state statute to identify. Um, so the school boards are required by state statute to identify the student academic standards adopted by the school board, and that will be in effect for the current school year. Uh, the district uses the Wisconsin State Standards in the areas of language arts, math, science, and social studies for grades K through 12, and other locally designed standards in all other areas and grade levels. I move the board approve the use of the student academic standards as presented for use in designing, delivering, and evaluating curriculum.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, uh, for that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign? All right.
Just to reiterate again, also, um, for anybody in, um, in the public that's ever interested on our website and our, uh, teaching and learning resource, um, all the information for all the curriculum as well as course guides, the flow of that curriculum, how it's used, how it's implemented, is all available for public access at any time, so feel free to visit that website, and if you ever have a question, you can, uh, reach out, call the district office, we'd be happy to help you access it.
All right. Any other questions for Lisa? All right, um, we also had a special meeting workshop on June 23rd. Uh, so that meeting was facilitated by Mr. Nitski from C6, and, uh, basically the workshop gave the board an opportunity to engage in conversation, to continue to move this, uh, move the strategic planning process work forward. Uh, started out by providing a summary of the board's previous discussions, so there was a previous discussion, if you remember, on high-performing boards. Um, he also provided an overview of the process of the Strategic Plan Continuous Improvement Team, and how they utilize that, uh, to guide, uh, that and their guiding principles, uh, that they followed. Um, he also explained the basis for the key performance indicators and the specific areas that will be measured. Um, and so, those four areas, when we look at, uh, key performance indicators, they will all fall into four basic key accountability areas, including learning and academics, finance, operations, and facilities, safe and healthy schools, and engagement, and connectedness. Um, also explained was, uh, shared engagement.
Um, if, uh, any opportunities come up in the future for, for the workshops like this, I think it would be worthwhile to look at, so. That's my take on that.
Any other comments by any board members?
I'm excited about the process. I think it's, uh, you know, um, from what we saw at the workshop, it's, uh, it's different, new and different, and, uh, I think the staff's already put in a lot of work for it, on it, and, um, I'm excited to see how it all comes together.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, articulate a couple of things for, uh, folks out there. So as, uh, President Preby, um, stated, there's four key accountability areas with this work. Um, learning and academics again being one, and finance, operations, and facilities being two, safe and healthy schools being three, and engagement and connectedness. And as part of that work, uh, we will be rating, um, and sharing with the public essentially in a, in a one-cheat or a snapshot, um, at all times of where we stand, and there's different pieces within those areas that are, are weighted, and that's also part of that snapshot, um, for the public. But part of the really exciting work, uh, that will, uh, take place throughout the course of this year, um, is building out those key accountability areas into specific key performance indicators, and using the, the, the feedback and the, the wisdom of the crowd and the feedback from our community, um, to really hone in on, um, learning and academics and what, what's expected and, and how exactly we're gonna measure that. Finance, operation, facilities, et cetera. So there's gonna be, uh, a number of different touchpoints for various community, uh, members and, and parents, uh, throughout the course of the year. Uh, we've established a draft map of that, uh, which has been shared, um, with the board, uh, for context, and as part of that work as well, um, we're looking forward to engaging with the board, um, no less than two additional times during the school year, uh, likely in December and again in February, um, to talk about this continuous improvement work. Um, and then again at the end of the year, something that will be different, um, we're hoping to, um, uh, participate, um, with our board, uh, at our Admin Academy. Um, we'd hold a, like a later afternoon session to kinda go over essentially, um, years end and, uh, bring some kinda closure to that more, more formally and have some discussion on that, uh, before we jump back into, uh, the August workshop that we have. So a lot of opportunity for community engagement and for board participation, so really excited about this process.
Yeah, and I would encourage any, any member of the board, please speak up if they're seeing something that doesn't make sense, or have a comment of an opportunity for improvement, uh, please make sure to let myself or Mark know, so, um, so we can continue to know those concerns and continue to move the strategic plan process forward, uh, for everybody. Any final comments?
I move that the Board of Education approve the key performance indicators and the corresponding areas of accountability as presented. With this, the board is affirming its support for the ongoing development of strategic benchmarks and monitoring systems that will guide our continuous improvement efforts. These efforts should include collaboration with staff, families, students, and community stakeholders to ensure alignment with our mission of guiding students and empowering futures as we strive to lead the way in student growth and achievement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second then for that Strategic Plan Continuous Improvement. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign? All right, just a reminder before we move on, no committee meetings next, this month, no committee meetings in August, so your next committee meetings will be in September, and we do have a board workshop scheduled for August 18th. So please check your calendars and be prepared for that.
August 18th, yep.
That is correct, right?
Yes.
All right. Um, with that, move on to, uh, ni, or, uh, board engagement and recognitions. Uh, anybody from the board wanna share any engagement opportunities they've had, uh, or any recognitions that I'd like to share?
I did go and see the Guys and Dolls musical that, that the high school put on, and that was, I actually went twice to see it, and then I did concessions one night too, so I got to watch it again. It was really good, but the music was just catchy. Good acting, good dancing. It's good talent from the area.
Anybody else?
Also went to a theater production, Allison Wonderland was last week. Lot of, uh, opportunities for a lot of kids in our community, so, uh, it was a great, it was a great show.
I did win the Starry Night chair that they were actually on. Well, I mean, I paid.
May have seen some principals' children there as well.
Anything else?
Well, I guess the last, um, thing we had to was, uh, um, was recognition of the retirees at the, um, and, so that was a good opportunity for, um, board members to thank them for their service, uh, the number of years that they were with, uh, with Beaverdam and, uh, go forward, so, I was at that.
Anybody else? Feel bad for you, Ike, there's not a lot of school opportunities for you to be, uh, tasting our delicious food options.
Summer school's in session, have you gone to lunch with them yet?
We're expecting a report out at the next board meeting for that.
We can make that happen, yeah?
We could probably make that happen. Mark? Speaking of summer school, just wanna continue to thank our staff, um, for everything they do to put on a great summer school program. We have great participation in our community, um, and, and the successes because of them. Um, I did actually have food on here, but it was just thanking Taher for the work they do with the summer meal program, um, for our students and, and all children in our community. Um, and then with summer projects, I know we heard a lot about, you know, what's going on related to projects, um, related to, more related to referendum, uh, per se, but there's a ton of summer, summer work going on, um, and there's also a ton of cleaning associated with, uh, just normal summer efforts, as well as the additional cleaning that is always needed whenever we're doing projects after the fact. So, I wanna thank our custodians, um, for the work they're doing and, and the work they're gonna have to probably maybe redo a little bit, uh, as we get closer to the year.
All right. Anybody else?
I move the board recess in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Part N1, Part C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or, or exercises responsibility specifically to, to discuss specific employees and employee groups and to discuss negotiation strategy.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second then to move into closed session, ask for a real call vote, please.
Yes.
Is it the answer?
Yes.
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 All right, we're gonna move into closed session, we'll be back for the finish of regular business. All right, we're gonna move into closed session. We'll be back for the finish of regular business.
There are a few resignations for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the resignations as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resignations as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There are a few leaves of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leaves of absence as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the leaves of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign.
All right, we have several appointments tonight. One of them is Nathan DeGaully, physical education teacher for Jefferson. That would be a limited term employment position of sixty-two and a half percent. Griffin Dietrich, math teacher at the middle school. Jamie Hahn, special education teacher as a long-term substitute for Lincoln Elementary School from September fifteenth to December fifteenth. Calista Janis, math teacher at the middle school. Kami Johansson, first grade teacher at Jefferson. Patrick Kilalea, ELL teacher at the high school. Seth Knox, math teacher at the middle school. Steve Kinsey as a long-term sub from November seventeenth to December fifteenth as a special education teacher at the high school. Jennifer Salzman, first grade teacher for Jefferson Elementary School. And Tara Stewart, English Language Arts teacher for the high school.
I move the board approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the appointments as presented. Roll call vote please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
All right, and we'll move on to payment claims.
I move for payment of claims in the amount of six million, five thousand, five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Second. All right, read our motion and a second then for payment claims. Roll call vote again. Yes.
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 Good. Yeah, it's good. All right, look for a motion for a German.
Second.
All right, motion and a second for German. All in favor say aye.
Aye.